Our college meeting, the order. Everyone place hands for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call the members.
Gary Roth.
Yes.
Ranger Bezica.
Yes.
Sean Zerwood. Jeff Edman.
Yes.
Tony Grass.
Yes.
Justin Donovan.
Yes.
Kathleen Walts. Yes. Alderman and Joe Prince.
Yes.
We have a call on?
We have a call on. Perimeter agenda for May 4, 2015 meeting. Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Perimeter minutes, February 17, 2015.
If there are no changes requested, I make the motion to adjourn.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduce the evidence.
I'd like to introduce the municipal code of the city of St. Genevieve. The staff reports provided. I also gave you some materials on our tax code and our business licensing that were on the table. They're just copies of the code provisions. And the St. Genevieve comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve the evidence?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input.
Hi.
Anyone like to?
We can have people come up after, like, we get started to talk, after we go through some of these points, if you would prefer, rather than to have.
Okay. Do we want to discuss them one at a time?
Yeah, if you want me to do it like a four, then I can, then I can kind of put it all in perspective. In recent weeks, we've learned that there are four VRBOs planned for, within the city limits. VRBOs are vacation rental by owner. That is also, I believe, a trade name for one of the websites that also does the marketing for these things. And it's a kind of a new, it's a newer phenomenon, and I think it's, it's becoming very popular and an alternative to the bed and breakfast type of guest lodging. Currently, our zoning code and our tax code and our business licensing code all have various descriptions of guest lodging, from tourist home to rooming house to boarding house to hotel, to rooming or lodging houses, to bed and breakfast. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is, one, is to come up with a good definition so that we can insert that language instead of all these kind of strange named, strangely named categories that I don't believe really exist anymore. I don't know of any rooming houses around here, but if we come up with one good term, I think it will help us have consistency across the code. Of course, the commission is only here to look at the zoning code, and we will take the issue, whatever you all decide here, if there are any changes, we would take and make the changes to the tax and business licensing code. The first, the first item would be to add the term "guest lodging" and transient guests to the definition section, which is 405.020. And these actually definitions come straight out of the, the business licensing language that I think really identifies the type of business we're talking about, which is typically a homeowner who has a single-family type home, who rents it out, you know, to guests, to transient guests, for weekends or weeks, but not really more than 31 days a month. And it's just an alternative to bed and breakfast. The, the owners are typically not on site. They typically don't prepare breakfast. They, they allow the, the guests to use the, the kitchen facilities if there are any. And, and so that's, that's the issue that was raised when this came out. So what we have proposed here is guest lodging to go into the place of all these other definitions and have it be decided defines a lodging establishment renting guest rooms or unit only to transient guests and having fewer than 10 guest rooms. Then a transient guest is any person who rents and occupies a guest room in a guest lodging establishment for a period of less than 31 days during any 12-month period. That gives kind of, you know, a definition to it that I think would encompass bed and breakfast as well as these, these new VRBOs. And so that's the first, would be the first order of business. And from there, we would then go to, and the second purpose for this meeting is to allow VRBOs or bed and breakfast under this definition in the R1 residential zone, which is the single-family zone, with, with special use permit and no signs for advertising the use, just like home occupations have very limited ability to use signage and having still parking restrictions like what is in R2. We would also change the language in R2 and C2 to include this guest lodging. And then we, when we came to the issue of whether, whether we would require parking in C2, C2 is the central business district, which is basically downtown, what we all consider downtown. There were some concerns about this off-street parking issue. Currently, the off-street parking requirements are you have to have one parking space per every two guest rooms unless you have a parking lot available to you within 300 feet. It's pretty evident that we don't have public parking lots downtown, so meeting this code requirement is, is been pretty, well, we don't really enforce this provision because it is off, you know, not easy for people to provide parking spaces as required by the code. And so one of the provisions that is proposed tonight is to eliminate the off-street parking restrictions just in C2. And then going on again to, to make consistency with the signage in the sign ordinance to discuss guest lodging and allow signage in R2 and C2, but not in R1. And also adjust the language where there's a column in that matrix that says H1 and H2, which no longer really exists. We have now just the national landmark district. So these are all changes that are a result of this new phenomenon and kind of just to get consistency across the board. And I don't, I think we could go through, I just went through the definitions, and then in R1, in R, in R1, we would add the guest lodging. In R2, we would change the word tourist home to guest lodging. In C2, we would, you don't need to add or subtract anything there because C2 encompasses C1 and C1 encompasses R2. So the only thing about it would be no special use permit would be required in the C2, as it is now. And then the parking regulation within C2 would change to say no off-street parking requirements. And then we would go to the parking section and we would change the language that says rooming or lodging house to say guest, guest lodging, one parking space for each two sleeping rooms. And then finally, under the signs, we would have, it's really the matrix. I don't know if you all are familiar with the matrix, but we would add guest lodging and have it say R2 and C2 only in the notes. And then the column that says H1, H2, would say national landmark district. And have a clarification on that, because that doesn't trump the zoning code, basically. Those are the proposals that we made, meaning staff, but we're more than happy to have discussion and talk about this new phenomenon, and it's up to you how to proceed. If you want to hear from citizens or for members.
Who would like to take a floor first?
Go, Wayne, go.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Ruslin. One of the people have a, a home on Main Street that we're currently updating and plan to put out on Airbnb or VRBO or maybe both. From what I've seen in, in the newspaper, some of you have expressed concerns about this kind of business, if you will, in your neighborhoods. And it's my experience with a friend in St. Louis who has been doing this for almost two years now, that there's no signage in the yard. They don't advertise that way. It's a website. Everything is done through the website. There's no issues. Anybody who stays at somebody's house and trashes it will ultimately be blackballed and won't be able to use the service. So it's in everybody's interest, the one that we as owners maintain the property, to keep it in good condition and to make it desirable for people to come and stay. And by the same token, the renters want to keep it good so they can use this wherever they go throughout the world, actually. Some of Airbnb is worldwide now. So it's in everybody's best interest to take care of things, to be good neighbors, to take care of the properties. I haven't heard of any problems. As I said, the friend that's been doing this for two years hasn't had any issues. We look at it like what, what you're proposing here is fine. And we could rent a place and the city would get nothing if we put it on a monthly or yearly rental, but we don't have a problem. It's part of doing business is to pay the, the taxes that accrue from this business, and it's not an issue.
Win-win-win for everyone.
Yeah. We, you know, look forward to being good members of the community, continue to be good members of the community, and provide a service that's not available right now. If you have any questions, it means that pretty much states my point.
What type of clients do the VRBOs generally have versus a bed and breakfast?
Like a bed and breakfast, typically, I'm going to say you're paying $100 plus a night for, for a house. So as opposed to a monthly rental where you might squeeze six, seven, I don't know, $800 maybe out of, out of a place in St. Genevieve, $100 a night, people are going to take care of that. It's all done through credit cards. It's all done through the corporate structure of the, the two organizations that I'm aware of. I suggest that, that if you look at the websites, one is Airbnb, and it's A-I-R-B-N-B.com, and the other is VRBO.com. Take a look at the sites, scroll around, look at some of the properties that are listed on there, what they offer, and ratings. The properties are rated by the people that stay there. The better the experience, the more ratings you get, the happier everybody is, one of those kind of things.
It's not cheap.
We're going to answer your question more thoroughly now.
Switch, switch.
Sorry. Interpretation needed for my husband and Kathy Bruce and his other half. You asked what type of people come. Previously, our house was used by Steiger House when we first purchased it as a carryover place. Some people prefer not to be in the bed and breakfast. They want to have privacy. Many times it's couples, sometimes it'll be two couples. Sometimes people bring children, and children are not really like, some, wouldn't bring kids to bed and breakfast normally. It's more for couples. Our house will have, has an attic bedroom and it has two twin beds, so people may bring their teenage children or their younger children, or just people want privacy, and they just don't want to stay at bed and breakfast with other people. You know, they just maybe want to come down for a week or a few days, and they've got a refrigerator, and they'll have the facilities, they can prepare their own meals, you know, they'll have the cost of the room, but then they don't always have to eat out. So that's the advantages of having a single place instead of staying at the bed and breakfast. But it's just an alternative, you know? Can't imagine it's going to hurt our bed and breakfast business because.
Different people. It's a different, yeah, different clients.
It's a different draw. Anything else? Did that answer your question?
What's the address of your house?
159 North Main Street. It's a John Hale house.
Jan, do you have a comment?
Yes. Evening. I'm Jan Bronze. My wife Kathy and I operate the insect jambo bay, Dr. Burke's house, two bed and breakfast. One concern I'd like to address is something I heard from Board of Alderman that, or members of the board, that there was a concern about new competition for the B&Bs. I am about to launch a VRBO property, and I operate two B&Bs. I am happy to have the competition. To me, competition grows business. So I think that's a fear that should be allowed. There are towns all over the country that when you name them, first thing of respondents coming is, oh, that's the B&B town. There are lots of towns like that in Missouri, they're all over. So I think that's a good thing. And like Kathy said, there are properties in town that predate VRBO, that predate the internet, that have been used as vacation rental by owner. So I don't see a problem. And I applaud your efforts to make, from what I've seen, to make this process workable and easy. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions to address the two so far before we get too stretched out here?
Well, I just got a question. I mean, it sounds by the, by the tone of everybody that's been up so far that, that they're under attack, and we're not looking for that.
No, we don't feel attacked.
Okay, I, I got the tone that they were trying to.
No, we just want to make sure you understand this is good for everybody. We don't feel attacked.
It's just something that is not addressed in cities. Trying to get it addressed so that it is permitted.
Right.
And I'm glad you spoke because that was one of my concerns, was that it would impact people that are already in that business. And that's the last thing we want, is for anything to take away from you. You have worked so hard to get where you are. We don't want to see anything like that happen, you know?
No, go back to tax and lodging tax. Be happy to do it. Now, do be aware that there are examples where, all over the world, VRBO, Airbnb, R worldwide, and they have hundreds of thousands of properties. Sometimes they roll out of vacation in too long terms. Just be aware of that. And that's, you know, you've mentioned, Petrie mentioned a 31-day rule. When that happens.
And it becomes just a rental. It, it takes it out of the guest lodging to a regular rental. So it wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything wrong with that because it would just turn into a.
Just for example, I brought that up.
Right. I would be interested to hear what your ideas are on how it's going to be regulated. I mean, if it is what these people are saying, I'm saying, well, it's fine, but there's always those loopholes, that slippery slope that where it turns into something other than, and I'm not implying these people, but where somebody sees a loophole and the next thing you know, you've got a problem, property.
The regulations would be this, is one is that, you know, we're not like the Snoop police, so, you know, if somebody's doing this that we don't know of and they're doing, you know, I mean, either people comply with the law or they don't, you know, it's, it's going to be in the newspaper, we're going to be talking about it. But the R1 and the R2 would require a special use permit, which would mean that they would have to come before you, and then we would notice the owner, you know, the, the properties around them, so that at least there would be some input. And then we could put, put restrictions on, you know, maybe how late use it can go and when is the owner going to pick up the trash because maybe trash shouldn't be sitting out all week? I mean, I, I happen to live out Lake Forest, and people put out their trash a week ahead of time, you know, and, and we don't want that to happen, and so those kinds of things.
R2 is occupancy numbers for a given place. I mean, that's got.
And I think that could be addressed during the special use permit process. Also, when they come in for their business license, we could then find out how many guest rooms that are there because they're taxed based upon the number of guest rooms. So then we can set occupancy based upon that as well. I think there are, there are two, you know, two or three different ways that we can, we can do this. And we do, we do our best to know what's going on in every house, but we don't always know, you know, unfortunately. But I think this process, I think, would lend itself to kind of just keeping tabs on things, and I, I completely agree. I've used VRBOs. I agree with Wayne and with Kathy and Jan. I mean, it fits a different niche of market, and, and it tends to be a little higher socioeconomic class of people that are doing, using these rather than a traditional, you know, rental. One of the things that I think is really important here is that we have a lot of housing that needs renovation and restoration. And if VRBOs is another way for that to happen and for the economics to work out, then that's a good thing for us. You know? Because, you know, if you have a house that needs, you know, is a $40,000 house and needs $40,000 worth of repairs, you're not going to likely recover that through a sale or through regular rental, but you might through a VRBO if it's successful.
Right.
So I think that that's a positive for allowing these things.
Many positives.
Mark?
I'm Mark Plakai, and I hope you guys know me. I like Wayne has several own properties here in town that actually looked at, possibly getting a few other delinquent properties and doing Airbnb. Petrie, as you're asking, you want to know who, who would be utilizing that, or who would stay at Airbnb? I'm one of those people. I've traveled extensively throughout Europe, and that's what we always do. And we typically, sometimes you get them a little cheaper than a bed, bed and breakfast, but you usually end up with, you know, nicer accommodations, and, you know, you just, you have your own little place, and some of them are an apartment-type buildings. Some places you do it that way. But one of the questions I had was on your section 405-020, under your 31 days, is that going to be cumulative, or would that be a one-time stay?
I think it would be not consecutive, so like, one month, two months, three months. I think it becomes then a regular rental at that length rather than a vacation rental for short-term.
And that's why I've been approached by a couple businesses in town about some of my rentals.
Yeah.
And they're, what they're doing, they're actually hosting people from France, from some of their workers. And I'm like, sure, I don't have a problem with it, but they're like, I don't know how long they're going to stay or whatnot. So they didn't want to, they didn't want to go into a one-month or a one-year lease.
Well, again, this, this would turn, you know, into a regular rental once you were no longer transient.
All right.
And, and so it wouldn't be more restrictive, it'd be less restrictive. So if you went from, if you were just renting out your house on a month-by-month, you know, basis, but you expected people to spend more than a month, then this would not apply to you.
Right.
And I think it's a great opportunity for, you know, businesses in town, Mississippi Lime and, and all the others who want to put people in a nice place that have to stay for periods of time. And that way we, you know, we can provide something like that. It's different than a B&amp;B or, or mic hotel or, or any of the other little, you know, motel hotels.
Hi, I'm Sam in Detroit. I just have a few points. The first one is when I first got into town, I ran the Main Street Inn, and I find that our rental that we're going to have over Sam's place at Rust serves a niche that that B&amp;B cannot serve. It has a larger, more rooms, more space, more whole families can stay, whereas suppose they would have to go into multiple rooms and not be able to keep track of each other as well or their families. And I think that that's a different niche than what we offered at the Main Street Inn and a lot of the other B&amp;Bs in town. We will charge a rate that will allow the people who stay there to be respectful to it. So it's, it's certainly not cheap, but it's, it's not for someone who won't be respectful. You get the 2%, which is fantastic. And as I'm walking here, I'm seeing a lot of beautiful buildings that need a lot of work, and if we can just tackle them one at a time and use them all in wonderful ways, and hopefully this money will go towards trying to revive some of those buildings, that's fantastic. And use everything we can to support that because we already do. And last, on the website that you have to go into, they get to when they're done, they get to say whether they liked your place or not. So the reputation exists already, and if we aren't offering them a quality, wonderful, beautiful place to stay, everyone who goes on VRBO in the future will know about that. So it's our reputation on the line as well as yours to make sure that it's quality. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I had something a second ago, and I totally lost it.
Questions or comments from the board?
Well, like I said before, I, I mean, after hearing you about it, I'm a little worried about it. In the beginning, not so much, you know? But as long as it's regulated in a way, I mean, I realize they're going to keep up their investment. To me, the fully scary part is the slippery slope to a rooming house. You know, we don't, we don't need to go back with what they're proposing, as they sound pretty good, you know?
I mean, I think, you know, the combination between the regulations and the special use permit and our building inspection process, I think would hopefully, I mean, you know, we all know that we have bad apples, and we do our best to keep that from happening, but I, I don't think that this definition is going to lend itself to a use that we can't imagine that would be bad. I mean, I think.
Well, I just hope that it all gets thought out so that we're not going, and somebody's all, well, it's not against the law.
Well, theoretically, right now, it is permitted as a tourist home on R2, and it's obviously permitted in C2. This would just clarify the language and, and now look at R1 only, which we, you know, right now, R1 is not, you know, permitted use. And so by doing it in R1, we are kind of expanding a little bit, but we still have a lot of properties that are in close proximity to downtown and our historic sites, and so that's a good thing if we can, I mean, I know, you know, we have one that's, that's being worked on right now that probably would not, would be sitting there falling down if it worked with this process. So I, I still think, all in all, it'll be a good thing, and hopefully the people that are not behaving will catch in, in various other places, too.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I think we need to go through each one.
One question. On the back of the page, you have, you have the last item, it's D. Did you mean it to be D or?
I meant it to be F. I apologize. I know. It is C2, but it doesn't say C2 in the parking regulation. So, yeah, the number, or letter D is the parking regulation piece of C2. I don't know if you all have any comments about the parking. I know that that was a concern of some of the folks about requiring off-street parking. I, I, you know, this was a way to resolve that issue consistent with what we're doing anyway. Obviously, if we have a big hotel that wants to get built downtown, you know, we might have to. have to rethink the whole parking situation, but let's.
From there, we're.
Yeah, I mean, that's a problem that I wish we had, you know? If we run out of parking, then golly, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other consented questions from the board members, I make the motion that we approve the six items that have presented in the staff report, item eight through F.
I have a motion.
Second.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
Ready to receive, oh, sorry, you cannot vote. Sorry. Jeff Eidman?
Yes.
Kathy Walz?
Yes.
Tony Grass?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
We have six in favor, so we'll pass this along to the Board of Alderman. And we will take it to the, for advice to the historic preservation commission as well. Doubt going to be any issues there. We'll have to have two weeks in the paper, so this will not come up on the board agenda until the end of May, the last meeting in May, whatever, twenty eighth of May.
Meanwhile, we can rent out our places, right?
Um, yes to you.
Okay.
Because you're already in the central business district, but in R1 not yet, not until they approve it. So if you're in R1, you'll have to wait until the board approves these changes to the zoning code.
Old business.
There's no old business. But there is old business. It is, okay.
In the minutes we just moved at this meeting, you, Mr. Chairman, you had raised the question about special use permits and their review. Have we made any progress on that?
We are. We, right now, we're in the process of converting all of the address files to a logical system and.
Different than a box?
Different than a box. But as you can imagine, during busy times, it's hard to go back to that, but we are slowly getting it, so we'll have a good sense of that. Some permits require re-review and some don't, and I had to kind of sort all that out as well. But yes, we are working.
I think we're all thinking of a couple at least that we think should have been back before us again and have not been.
I am unaware, I am, I think I know one that you may be thinking of, but I'm not sure. Two years.
Any other old business? Joe, you want to say something? Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Motion carries.